Open up the subcommittee. So, um, I think we all understand the problem, what the issue is here. Um, so I don't want to spend too much time rehashing the hearing in terms of why we need to pass something to deal with this problem. What I want to focus on is just distinguishing the three bills and what they do, and then, uh, see if we can find consensus to what is the right answer to go forward with. So, um, first one is relative reimbursement of 185. Okay, so 185, um, 185 does not set any particular rates other than that it mandates the insurance company pay whatever the ambulance company bills. Simple as that. You know, there is no negotiation, unless, unless, of course, the ambulance company actually had a contract with the health insurance company, assuming they don't, because they don't now for some of them, and that so simply this says that whatever the ambulance company bills them, the insurance company has to pay for it. You have to go over the microphone, unfortunately.
You know, I keep talking about just pay the bill. Where is it in statute that they don't have to pay the bill?
Who's that?
The insurance company.
Who, who says they don't have to pay the bill?
Well, they don't.
Oh.
Right? They don't pay it in full. Do they?
They pay what they, what they want to pay, right?
Pretty much. That's the way I see it. We send them a bill for X and they pay Y.
Right. Well, they, they have...
I don't know any other place that that happens.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Representative Gibbs?
May I put something in? Um, isn't the problem that the entity being billed is not the insurance company? The entity being billed is the patient, and the patient is obligated to pay the bill, but the insurance company only is obligated to pay, at least according to them, what they've contracted for. And most of the ambulance providers in New Hampshire are outside the contract, and that's where we run into the problem.
So, no contract, there's no deal to pay less, and if they're representing that patient for the bill, then they should be paying that. I know if my insurance company doesn't pay my ambulance bill, I'm going to be calling them and asking them why.
Representative Charisa, you have a question?
Uh, because I just want to understand, I mean, this is a subcommittee we are going to talk about? Or is it like, it's not a hearing, right?
This is not a hearing. This is a casual conversation, trying to, try to find out...
Amongst friends.
So, so I, I have like some basic question itself on, on this bill. One is that, uh, an insurer provide reimbursement for ambulance service at the rate negotiated between the insurer and the ambulance service provider. So if the ambulance service is in network with the insurance company, that's, that's the easiest part, because they must have a contracted rate between them.
Correct.
But, so, and in that case, probably it might be 50%, if less than 50%. What, what about the insurance company and the provider, and the ambulance services understood as reasonable? Because seems to me the rates are not regulated right now. Rate can be set by the ambulance company, whatever rate they want. So, the problem here, I see that in the absence, the next line, "In the absence of agreed upon rate, an insurer shall pay the amount billed by the ambulance service's provider for the service." So if it's out of network, then there is no contracted amount. And now with this bill, you are saying that if suppose the ambulance service charges a hundred dollars for a particular service, now in-network provider, because they might have contract, let's say, pay sixty dollars, then they'll pay fifty dollars and both the party are fine. If it's out of network ambulance, now you're saying that it's a hundred dollar bill, the insurance company has to pay a hundred dollar bill, which is not fair, because it's the, it's the same service, and we are now encouraging the out-of-network ambulance provider to get more from the insurance company.
So, I can assure you that most of the ambulance companies are not in-network because they cannot survive on what the insurance company is offering in-network payments. Just can't happen. And they keep dangling this in front of us because they're supposed to be able to push more patients through them. That's what in-network does, right? You're in network, we're going to push patients towards you. We're an emergency service. When they're laying upside down in their car, they're not calling the insurance company and saying, "Hey, which ambulance service should I call?" You dial 911 and we're coming to get you. Being in-network does nothing for us except get us less money.
I just, I just want to clarify one thing, that, you know, I, I know one thing that the ambulance service providers, they are doing essential service for medical, and, and it's a required service. I also want to help the ambulance company, but there are few things that are there in the bills, and seems like the ambulance company, they want both ways, which is, you know, they, they, they... First of all, I saw some of the bills, you know, that, that say that there should be some, some oversight on what kind of rate is being charged for a particular service. I had asked that question even in one of the hearing to one gentleman, that why the rates for the same service is different from two different ambulance companies, because the same service, and there's no answer for that. Now, the thing is that, yeah, in, in a, in a capitalistic model, you can put any amount to any service you want. But here we are talking about, you know, using state influence or using a regulatory body now to kind of, I mean, bailout is not the right word, but it's kind of bailout, okay? You help the insurance, you, you help the ambulance services to survive. And I do want it to survive, not to survive, but do a good job. But then they also should be monitored by certain regulatory bodies in, in terms of setting the rates.
You realize that 90% of the people that you're talking about are fire departments run by the cities and towns that are not for profit, and we're just trying to cover the cost of that, taking the burden off some of our taxpayers, is what that is about, right? It's not about us making all kinds of money. We're just trying to take the burden off the taxpayer, because it's not, uh, uh, if somebody gets sick or injured, it doesn't affect the whole town like a fire does, right? That's why the fire department's there, because if we don't show up, the whole town burns down. So, yeah, that's a taxpayer burden, right? But the ambulance is not a taxpayer burden. It's that person's burden, right? And the town is nice enough to set this up, but we have to cover some of the cost. We're not here to make money. We're not here to put the insurance company out of business. The, the ambulance line in the insurance company is like 2%. It's not a big bill for them, but apparently this is the hill they're going to die on, right?
And, and I think I already answered that question in the beginning, so when I said that we are definitely, because this is considered to be a essential service, and this needs to not only survive, but it also needs to thrive and do a good business. There's no question on that.
That's why we're all here, to survive.
But the thing is that, what is, but, but the question too, and I still didn't get an answer from any of, even, is that what is the harm or what is the objection in having the rate schedule of the ambulance service to be seen by Oversight Committee or maybe some committee, I don't know, somebody, so that the ambulance company do not bill just like that to, you know, because I have seen the medical billing system in general. When you go to any medical service, you go to a primary care physician for one visit, 10, 10 minutes visit, they charge $400 to the insurance company. Insurance company pays $200, maybe, maybe less, and if you pay cash, it might even be less than that. The point I'm trying to say is that what is the appropriate value of that service? Because, you know, obviously, the medic, the medical system is surviving with the insurance company payment to them, and not only survive, they are doing, they are making profits too. But, so the, the, what I'm struggling is that, again, I'm not expert in the ambulance billing, and I, all I know in general is that there is a lot of overbilling happens in medical subsystem, and I'm not saying ambulance system is a part of that, or it could be, I do not know. You have to educate me on that. But I feel that when somebody sets the rate, an ambulance, an insurance company sets the rate, or somebody sets the rate, I mean, it will, it will be totally, not only unfair, unrealistic that, hey, if, if a glass of water costs a dollar, I'll say, okay, I'll dictate, I'll pay only 10 cents. Insurance companies cannot say like that, I'll pay only 10 cents, that's not a question. They have to be reasonable. When, when, when a contract happened between ambulance company and insurance company, I'm sure both the parties talk about the realistic cost of the glass of bottle. Now, ambulance service company said, no, I'll charge five bucks. Insurance company said, no, I'll pay 50 cents. That's not reasonable. So, what I'm trying to struggle here is that when the insurance company, and again, it's in-network, and out-network is a different ballgame. When, when the insurance company negotiates the rate with the ambulance provider, why they will force the ambulance provider to be paid so less that they can't survive? I mean, nobody's blind. I mean, even insurance company understands that part, that for this service of a glass of water, which cost a dollar, you have to pay something on a dollar. You can't pay 10 cents.
Correct. So, when we tell you it's a dollar...
So, why do you say that?
Pay us a dollar. We're not, we're not trying to charge five dollars for the bottle. We're trying to charge a dollar for the bottle, but they want to pay us 10 cents.
Okay, all right, yeah.
You got a point, right? I mean...
I, I think your point is very well taken.
There's a reason we're not in-network, because they want to give us the 10 cents, and we want the dollar. We need the dollar, it's not that we want it.
So then that needs to be looked upon by some regulatory body, right?
Unfortunately, this situation is not as simple as that. There are other factors involved, and I think we should move on a little bit, because we got to touch on all those factors before we take our decision.
Isn't the reason that there are different costs in different areas for ambulance service is that the actual cost of running the ambulance service is different in different, different areas? As particularly in rural areas, the costs are higher, because the, the geographical area that they cover is much bigger, and at the same time, the number of calls is smaller, but they still have to maintain service 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And so, the cost for each service has to be higher. Isn't that, isn't that the issue we're dealing with?
It's only part of the issue.
Yes, only part of the issue, because up north, they may pay their people a little bit less, but because of the competition down south, they have to pay their people more. So, you're back up to the same cost. So, yeah. We did a, a big survey here in the state, and the feds did a big survey to come up with the actual cost of what it costs to run the ambulance, and nobody seems to care about that.
Okay, so, did you have anything else you want more to say, Representative Spear, or Gibbs?
I said what I wanted to say, thank you.
Okay, all right. Representative Spear, and then...
I wanted to go over this analysis that the insurance department did for me, but I, we're not on that bill yet, so...
Right, so right now, what I want to do is make sure we understand what all three bills do, and that we can then discuss the pros and cons of each, but once we, once we all understand. So, does everybody understand what Representative Peru's House Bill 185 does? Everybody feel comfortable?
Yeah, but I still have one question on the last line in that, in the bill, and maybe, you know, someone can answer. It says, "The provisions of this section shall not apply to policies that do not include coverage for ambulance services." So, this is, this is another caveat.
So, what is, what is that supposed to mean, Representative Peru?
I'll have to read it. I don't have anything...
It says, "The provisions of this section," this is in the church, "I'll provide reimbursement," no, it's, it's in all three paragraphs, you know, both paragraphs.
Yeah, I mean, I can read again if you want.
Okay, so one is, one is, is for the, I assume, group, and one is for individual. So, it says that "The provisions of this section shall not apply to policies that do not include coverage for ambulance." So that means that you, there could be a health insurance policy that specifically excludes ambulance service. I've never heard of one. Have you ever heard of one that did that?
I haven't.
Shouldn't this be mandated?
So where the hell did that come from?
I'm sure there's one out there.
Oh, you're sure? Okay, so, I...
The question is, shouldn't that be mandated?
That is, he's saying that that was put in there as it is going to be, that, that obviously, if your policy doesn't have ambulance coverage, then this paragraph won't apply.
So, so let me ask another question related to that. Is it, is it mandated, and again, I think, the insurance...
There is no ambulance mandate at this point in our statute.
No, no, I'm saying that the insurance department person is here also, maybe. Is it mandated that all the insurance has to cover ambulance service?
Okay, so, is it a, is it a mandated coverage, or, or, actually, you know what? I hate to do this, but I think you need to have a seat with a microphone. Okay, why don't you introduce yourself, so everybody in the committee knows who you are?
Hi, I'm Michelle Heaton. I'm the Director of Life and Health at the New Hampshire Insurance Department.
And she's their legal beagle, okay? She's their legal counsel, so, yes.
So, just to clarify, emergency services is an essential health benefit. So, it would be covered under, it's part of our benchmark plan, so it's going to be covered in pretty much all plans.
There is no health insurance plan now that does not have this covered.
No, we have no health insurance, major medical health insurance.
That is a meaningless line.
Thank you.
I will let the drafters know they don't need to put that in.
Next time you put this bill in, make sure you don't put that sentence in.
Hey, they put it in for me.
I'm just trying to make it easier, you know?
All right, so everybody's okay with understanding what 185 does?
Yep.
All right, good. Next is 316. Well, let's do, before we do 316, let's do 725. All right, so, I see the sponsors here. So, what we understand when we read this bill is that the magic number is 325% of Medicare rate. Is there anything else we need to know more than that? I'm saying, is there, is that, is, is that the salient item, is that, that the reimbursement rate, we're going to mandate the rate must be 325%?
It's, yes, it's 325 for a non-contract, assuming that 325% of the Medicare rate is higher than what they charge, which is not the case for every...
What do you mean by charge?
What, what the ambulance service providers charge is...
Oh, so the ambulance company could bill something less than 325, but we're assuming that the, that the, you're billing, they're billing more than the 325, and so therefore, this sets a floor to how much the insurance company has to pay.
Uh, it sets a, a ceiling, right?
I would call it a floor.
If the charge is less than, than the 325, they would pay the charges. And, and there are some ambulance providers that would charge less than this amount, according to the things I looked at.
See, if it was a ceiling, you would, sky's the limit, right? They could pay whatever...
I, I think we, we agree with what the sentiment is, if we describe it another way. But that's, that's one of the three elements of this bill.
That's the key element, right?
And that's probably the most significant one for comparisons.
All right. Everybody all clear on that?
So, 325% of the Medicare, Medicare services.
Exactly.
Medicare, published rates.
Okay, they're published rates. Okay, great. Easy enough. And last but not least...
Oh, I'd, I'd just say the other thing that's different from the previous bill is...
Yes.
Is the prohibition on balanced billing, right?
You didn't have prohibition on balanced billing in yours? I don't know. Okay, so his intent is that he did need to have that repeal, I mean, have that requirement, because that the ambulance company is going to get its full amount.
Makes sense.
Fair enough.
So, so basically, if, if they pay 325%, then there's no balance billing to the patient?
But there's no need for balance billing in 185, because the insurer would have to pay the entire bill, so there's no balance.
For, in, 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 that's true, of 185. That's in 185. And, and, but in, in 725, uh, they, they did, they do the high number, the high percentage, 325, but said, no, they'll, there, there's no balance billing at that point. And as Representative Peru has pointed out in the past, that 325 still won't make, still won't get the money that they need. Okay, so now we come to 316.
What, another one?
Okay, so, 316, and yes, I am the sponsor, but so I can, uh, talk about what, what's in this bill and what the intent of the bill is. And 316 is saying is that, well, we know that whatever number we pick, whether it's, well, the bill that's going to pay, pay whatever, it's going to be a very high percentage of Medicare rates. And 325 is, is one of, right. So, I, I guess this will be my mantra, is the fundamental problem here is, is, is stated right there in, in the concept of the Medicare-Medicaid rates, in which 80% of the users of ambulances, and that's everybody, and that's either transfers or emergency calls, or 80% are Medicare-Medicaid patients. 80%. And yet Medicare-Medicaid pays the lowest amount, right? Because we're talking like 325% of that, I mean, the lowest rates. So, the downside of those bills is you're now going to look at the 17% of the insured, who are insured, which even of that percent, that 17%, only seven of that, so that's, that's for discussion purposes, say, half of that group actually will ever use an ambulance. And we're going to ask that group to pay for the fact that Medicare and Medicaid rates are so low. We're expecting them to pay it. Now, obviously, the current statute, the current policy, or as I say, the current way we've been doing businesses is that that group of people, that people who are fully insured, the insurance company is going to pay what they have their, guy with the green shades that come up and came up with their, their compensation rate. And the end result is that an ambulance company has to balance bill. What's missing before you make that statement about balanced billing is, if there wasn't any balanced billing, then that rate, that differential would have to be paid, and let's say with Medicare and Medicaid, that differential is paid by the city and towns. The property taxpayers are paying that.
Can you repeat the last part, last sentence?
The property tax, if the, that in terms of the current system now, which is that 17%, or let's say the Medicare pay, you know, which is very low percentage, that all that loss, that, that, that the money that's not getting paid, right now, the obligation is the cities and town, property taxpayer.
Okay.
They're the ones who are paying it. Okay? So, over the years, it used to say the city and towns weren't too crazy about paying all that service, that the pattern in practice has been to balance bill. To, they would, the fire departments, the ambulance companies, wherever way they're organized, would then send a bill to the patient and said, "Whatever your circumstance is, whether you're Medicare, Medicaid, or whether you're private insurance, this is how much we got from them. This is our bill." They, Representative Peru, "This is what our bill is. That difference, please send us the check." And so therefore, the city and town taxpayers wouldn't have to pay for it. But if they don't pay for it, the city and town taxpayer has to make up the difference.
Aren't we talking about these things just because historically, that bill being sent to the person is not paid most of the time?
We're saying, we've heard, we've heard anywhere from 60 to 80%.
Not paid?
Not paid.
So, only 20% gets paid?
60 to 80% gets paid, excuse me. 60, 80% gets paid, 20 to 40% does not get paid.
So, 60, 80% gets paid is pretty good amount of getting paid.
I know that some people might not agree with that, but what is...
Because I thought that's the problem, that's what I'm there talking about.
Just tell us, what do you think that they get paid? What, what is your balance billing? 20 or 30% actually gets paid.
Yes, that's what I assume, because...
So, basically, 20, 30, they're saying it's that low of a percentage gets paid, and so therefore, the remaining balance to make the fire department or make the ambulance service get what they need, they will, they will then back bill, if you want to call it that. They will then say to the city and town, "For us to continue our operation or our services, you need to, we need this X amount of money to balance our books." Okay, Representative Gibbs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I went over these bills last night, and based on the extensive information that we got during the public hearing, it occurred to me that there are three things that are important in all of these bills. One is that the insurance company pay the provider directly, which I believe all three bills provide. The second is that there not be balanced billing because of the problem that that causes to the patients. And two of the bills provide that. It doesn't apply in 185 because they are the bill from the providers, the insurance company is the entire bill, so there's no balance left. And then the third is the amount of money that we're going to require the insurance company to pay the provider, and that that amount leaves the provider in a situation where they at least have a fighting chance of not going out of business. And we have to approach this with the knowledge that we can, there's nothing we can do about the Medicare or Medicaid rates because we can't control the federal government. And there's basically nothing we can do about the amount of money that the municipalities have because we don't control their property tax rates. So, what we can deal with is the rates that we're going to set for the insurance company. I realize this is only going to be for a proportion of the policies, but again, that's all we can deal with, that's all we have power over. And the testimony from the providers was that the only setting at which they would have a fighting chance of not going out of business, and I recognize that this is not going to solve all their problems, but, which would give them a fighting chance of not going out of business. And I recognize that some of my colleagues are going to strongly disagree with this, but from what they said, that it was, it's a 325% of Medicare as in House Bill 725. And that seems to me the most logical thing to do.
Okay, Representative Miles?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with you, Representative Gibbs. My question is, isn't it better to receive for the town 325% of Medicare than 0% of, from a balanced bill that most people just really can't cough up the money to pay? That's my question.
I think that's why we're talking about, that we should look towards paying 325%. It's because balance billing, definitely looks like balance billing is not working. I mean, I don't know where you got the information that 50, 80% are getting paid. I hear from them, it's 20% getting paid. I mean, there is no, I don't know whether, whether data or who is, where is the correct...
Right, because at the end of the day, if, if let's say there wasn't any balance billing, let's say if we just said no balance billing, then whatever was short would be paid by the property taxpayers who have that ambulance company in their town.
Yeah, apparently, balance billing is not working, otherwise...
No, balance billing will, where it does work. I mean, that 20%, I'm sorry, that's just not, that, that may be their perspective on it, okay? But I'm just telling you that, I, I, and I guess we can ask people around the room, I mean, how many people have ever had to pay the balanced bill? I know I've done it for my, for my mother, and I paid the whole percentage.
Same as I, yeah.
Okay, so I think most people are fine, upstanding citizens, and they're, and I, the 20% makes no sense to me. But if there is a 20%, that means that all those people in that community were fine with letting the city or town that they live in make up the difference.
Yeah, so, and now I have more hard time understanding, if balance billing is working, and if, if it's not being, if it, if it didn't work to that extent, then city and town is picking the tab, then why the ambulance company is right now here, they are saying the story that they are on the verge of extinction and they can't operate properly if nothing, nothing is done.
So, I have an opinion about that side.
That part I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding then.
Okay, well, let me tell you my opinion.
Isn't the balanced billing also a serious problem for the patients? We have to also keep that in mind, as well as the fact that the ambulance companies are never getting the full amount of what, of what they need to bill.
That's the point that I want to make. I have been on this committee for over 30 years, and I have heard this claim that they are going out of business all 30 years. So, why haven't they gone out of business?
Well, that's what I was, I had a hard time understanding.
I'm going to tell you the simple answer.
Yeah.
Because they have been able to get the cities and towns to pay for them. And I am asking you to think, there is no difference between an ambulance and a fire truck or an, or a police car. In all three cases, the town is providing a service to the community, they have, do a vital service, okay? But that, at the end of the day, if they're going to go out of bank, they're going to go bankrupt, right? They're going to go out of business, okay? It's because the city and town decided not to pay them anymore. That's who would pull the plug, because they are municipal. That's who they are.
And they have to pay anyway, because it's a sense of fairness.
There are plenty of private companies out there, but those private companies are only in the big cities, okay? As a matter of fact, in my county, we had a private company, and it was in huge financial distress. And yes, as sitting, as a member of the executive committee in my county, we got to look at the books, and we know exactly why he was losing a lot of money. Because they weren't charging the cities and towns enough money. Whatever the balance billing was, and yes, it was 65%, something like that, okay? The issue is here, is that, is it fair that 17% of the population, state's population, is going to fund the health, to pay for these ambulances for the remaining 83% of the state? Is that fair?
But isn't it the insurance company? And I realize that this will result in somewhat higher premiums, but what I understood, what I understood from the hearing is that it would be a few dollars for each person, not a huge...
Anybody will spend what they want, but it's like $7 per person, you know, per month, you know? Add that number up. It's, it's, it would be, it would be the largest mandate we've ever passed out of this committee, if we would pass that number.
Wouldn't it be better to do that rather than put it on the property taxpayers?
If we, if we lose one person on the rolls of the insurance because they can't afford their premiums, and it's $7 per policy, per person in the family, so if it's a family of four, it's four times seven, if we lose those people, it's going to cost us a whole heck of a lot more money. So, don't be so quick to give away our insurance premiums and, and knock people off the rolls.
Okay, but here, but I'm, I'm not finished yet, okay? So, what happened is, this issue has been around forever, okay? And we've nipped and tucked, and we were making sure the insurance check, this past year, we made sure the insurance company's check went directly to the ambulance and not to the consumer, because the consumer would just cash the check and, and, you know, like in using the words of Ken Wilder, "Woo-hoo!", okay? So, the issue here is that we all agree, insurance companies can pay more. That is the premise.
Yes.
And so therefore, what we said is, the, ask the insurance department to have, to hire an outside expert who would collect information from all these people you see in this room here. They all sent data, and come back with a percentage that is appropriate, and not just picked out of the air, like 325.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think...
And that's what 316 does, okay?
But then why does Maine have a 400% level?
Again, they pulled the number out of the air. There, there is no, there is no financial basis for the 325 or the 400, any of those numbers. They, they just, they just winged it.
So, I agree, it should be a negotiated amount between the insurance company and the ambulance service. We should be just mandating some percent with, with no...
Well, no, the percentage, but, but we're, we're being thoughtful about this. And then we'll look at this percentage every two years. You know, we're going to take this statistical analysis, we're going to bring it in, and we're going to be thoughtful about what that increase. So, you know, maybe, maybe 204, which is what I believe we're at, you know, is not right, 204? Am I getting the right number?
I believe 202.
202, excuse me. Okay, 202 is what we have, you know, if we were, that, the way, it's the current analysis. Who knows what it'll be from two years from now, but given inflation, I'm sure it'll be higher, okay? But what we're saying is, let's just not, just take a number because we, we feel sorry for the ambulance companies, and we feel sorry for the fire departments and the towns in which have these services. Let's just be rational about it, and be thoughtful about it, and come up with a reasonable number, a reasonable percentage, that we know, we build into it, that it can grow, knowing full well that the real, we're not really solving the whole problem, but we run a chance, and I can't, there's no promises here, but we run a chance that once we pass this mandate, we can go back to CMS and ask them to up the Medicare reimbursement rate. That is the hope. We're not guaranteeing it. We know that there's waiver, there are some processes in which we can make a case that the number should be a higher number, but at least this legislature is going to do something. Because what I'm telling you is, that even if you were to take this 325, we just heard from one of the sponsors, that ain't, that won't cover the problem. So, they'll be back, and they'll be back again, and again, and again, coming back with, just give us whatever we bill, okay? And we all know, the ultimate goal is really to get rid of balanced billing. We really want to get rid of balanced billing.
So...
So, the question is, how much of that number should be? What's the rational number that make, gets rid of the balanced billing, which takes care of the taxpayer too, okay? The people who are doing it, okay? But then spreads that balanced billing fee over that community, the taxpayer, and that committee will make up that difference.
So, I have two, two questions and comment, actually. One is that, so are you saying that you are in favor of putting a number like 325%? Or are you saying that you are in favor of having a negotiated contract between the insurance company and, and ambulance services? So, they can figure it out that realistically and logically, let's say it's 325% or 400%, let's give that amount paid.
No, I, I'm saying, I'm saying I want you to support my bill.
Yeah, your bill doesn't, your bill doesn't mandate 325%. Your bill says that it should be a contracted amount.
It's 204. It's calculated, you don't see it, you won't find it in the bill, but in the bill, it says...
204%?
Is 204 for this year, if we pass it, because we hired an outside consultant. It wasn't done by the department, so it was somebody else who surveyed all these people in the room, and they gave them their numbers. And he came, they came back and said that the right number is 204.
And we can't force them to sign a contract. Constitution would not let us force them to sign a contract, so that's not an issue.
Well, then, well, I mean, I'll come back to that, but another question that I have to ask you, when you're saying, you, you mentioned the statistic that 83% are Medicare, Medicaid patients, only 17% are regular insured. How good your information is, where do you get that information?
This, this is, this is hard numbers from the insurance department.
Okay, thank you. So, coming back to that percentage, so, so you, you are proposing 204%. Some bill is proposing 325%. So, basically, we are just throwing a number from different studies.
No, the 325 is, is, they're winging it, just like Maine did for, for whatever.
Yeah, so that's...
They're, they're winging the number.
A number just thrown out.
Exactly, and, and I, I feel very, I don't, I feel that's irresponsible to take a number like that. I think the right way to do it is to actually figure out exactly what the insurance companies should be paying.
Yeah, so, why, why, why are we mandating that should be part? Why not we let the insurance company and the provider, and provider to sit together on the table, figure it out what is more reasonable, logical, and practical number, and let them come with the number rather than we dictating?
They had...
That's not our discussion today.
We did that last year.
We won't do it. They will not do it.
What happened?
They had 30, all my years that we've asked them, "Why can't you guys just work this out?" And we've, what we do know is there's some of the companies do have contracts. But we noticed that those, the ones that have contracts are ones that are in high urban, high usage areas. Those are the ones that have the contracts. It's the rural areas, the other areas that they don't, and the, and, and the finger is being pointed at the insurance companies that they weren't paying enough, and that's what we're trying to solve.
Okay, I, I get, I get your point, and, you know, I'm, I'm understanding. But there was one email... Uh, but there was one email that also came. One email had come from one ambulance company saying that Harold Brigham is paying fifty percent. When, I don't know, there's so many numbers, everybody is sending different numbers. They are saying Harold Brigham was paying fifty percent, other insurance is paying like forty, thirty, like that. I think the email came to the whole committee from one of the ambulance provider. So which number should we trust? Like how much insurance company is paying?
Uh, well, maybe again, in terms of what to trust is that we, uh, this committee passed last year. And I think it was unanimous and when we passed, we voted for it.
Can we, can we talk about this study now?
The insurance companies have been trying to get the ambulance providers to sit down and sign contracts with them for years and years. And the ambulance providers won't do it because of the problems they've explained. And we can't force them to do it. We cannot force the two parties to sign the contract if they don't want to do it and they don't want to do it.
Look.
We are in direct.
Yes, Representative Ma.
Sorry.
Thank you. So I, I just wanna pull it back a little bit and refocus on the, the specific bills that we're discussing here. So from, from a provider perspective, someone that sees patients and EMS providers every single weekend when I'm working, I just don't think it's much to ask if the worst case scenario is to pay five dollars more in premium. I don't think that's much to ask to save one person's life if we, if it means keeping one EMS provider, one extra person on so they can go answer a call while the other two are busy. I don't think five dollars is the price of a life.
Fair enough. So Representative Spear would very much like to get a little more understanding about how we came up with the two oh two number. So, uh, can we, you have, who's, who from the department would like to?
So we participated at the beginning of the, uh, at the beginning of this session.
Okay, right, Representative Spear first, yes, go ahead.
We participated at the, uh, we asked for, at the end of last year, we asked for the insurance department to contact all of the providers and give us an analysis of what it, what it actually costs uh, for various services within the ambulance providers. And they did a study and I hope everybody read it. But when we had the discussion last time we were together, the ambulance folks, a couple of the folks gave me a list and showed numbers that were considerably higher than what they may have provided to these folks. And yet it's the same set of folks providing the information. So I asked the insurance department, why are we saying in this document that ALS Support One, non-emergency is six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and two cents? And these folks are saying it's two thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and one cent when the, when the basis for this information came from the same people. Why are the numbers so different? And so the insurance department very kindly did an analysis and they gave me the answer and I'd like them to go over that with you. You want this or you have it online?
So what, what's the answer, Carrie?
I, I want, I don't want you to think I made up anything. Hear it from the insurance department.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, in the ambulance study, that is based off of the GATS data. The GATS data has been collected by CMS from all of the providers over several years. As part of this study, what the PCG, the consultant asked them to do is take that same GATS information and submit it to them so that they can use that, um, as a basis for the analysis. So everything in that cost study is from the data being provided by the ambulance service providers. Um, what Representative Spear reached out to us is I believe in the testimony, there was a chart um, that was provided, um, that outlined what the proposed rates are compared to what their billed charges were. And, um, for this particular unit, um, they had been involved in our ambulance summit. So back when we were talking about this in the fall of twenty twenty-three, they had provided a similar chart to us and, um, we looked back at that and we've noticed that since then, their charge rates have increased dramatically. Um, and so when we looked at the analysis, um, given their, um, at the time, as part of the ambulance study, they gave us their payer mix and their, um, the, the mix of the different types of codes that they do. So we were able to actually use that and with the proposed rates and the information they gave us for the ambulance study, uh, for, from the ambulance summit, um, we actually anticipate that they'd be getting more money than they were back then. So I, I, I mean, I can't speak to why they increased their rates, but, um, you know, we just observed that since so then to now, they've increased their rates draft.
So, sorry, sorry to interrupt because we, we use a lot of they and they and this and the numbers. Can you just clarify a little bit so they understand? You put, you get two numbers, two thousand by somebody and then number came to six ninety-eight. Can you, you know, answer, say, who was two thousand dollar by, given by whom and how it was six ninety-eight part? Because I, I, I couldn't understand that part. We just use they, this, and I, you know, if it's more specific, that'd be easier.
Yeah, so I believe, um, Tilton Nor, Tilton Northfield Fire in EMS is the, the unit we're talking about. And they participated in our cost study. So in our, when we, um, not in the cost day right here, but, um, the ground ambulance summit. So at the time of the ground ambulance summit, they provided us with their charge rates at the time, so for.
And that was two thousand?
That was for two thousand twenty-two, their rates. So we were, when we were talking about this in the fall of twenty twenty-three, they gave us their information, which was their most recent data year for twenty twenty-two. So in twenty twenty-two for ALS one, their rate was, um, twelve hundred and eighty-three.
The ambulance rate?
One thousand two hundred and eighty-three thousand ninety-five cents plus mileage. And then I believe in the information that they provided in the, um, I'd have to refer back to it. I don't know that I have that one with me. So, um, so at the time their cost was one thousand two hundred and eighty-three. Our proposed rate for that same code.
So when they say use the word our, who is our here?
Our is from the cost study that was just done.
Okay, so your agency?
So sorry.
Your agency, you're saying?
Well, PCG, the consultant that did it.
Okay, so so far I, I.
So the consultant rate that they're proposing is one thousand one hundred and fifty, no, one thousand one hundred and five.
Okay, and, and the ambulance agency rate was twelve hundred something you said?
Yes, that's what they were charging in twenty twenty-two. But in their testimony, they're saying now that their rate, their current rate for this year is two thousand one hundred and eighty. So just from, um, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five, their, their rate has increased by like seventy percent.
And this is the consultant is saying that. I'm sorry, the consultant is saying that the rate changed from one hun, one thousand one hundred to two thousand something in two years. The consultant is saying, not ambulance services.
Yeah, so their charge rate, not what they're collecting, but what they're billing for that.
Was it the consultant or the ambulance company who said, who gave you the higher rate?
The ambulance provider, Tilton.
Wasn't the consultant? Do we have any idea as to the reason for the difference?
They would have to speak to that.
Okay, do you wanna come defend your number?
We were just pointing out.
So can I make a request, please? When we use the word we, they, can you just say ambulance service, insurance service? And when they have to speak means please say ambulance service has to speak. Because then I understand who is they and who is we because it's hard to follow, otherwise, uh, who is representing what?
I'll try to follow that.
Thank you.
So the difference between what we supplied to the GATS study and what we're currently doing now is when those rates were.
Identify yourself so you know who we is.
Sorry. The, um, I'm Michael Setar, I'm the chief of the Tilton Northfield Fire District. And when I, when I say I'll try to say TNFD's rates in twenty twenty-two that were supplied to GATS, those rates were an average, uh, so I'm, uh, I have to answer to a board of fire commissioners and they set the rates. I don't set the rates. The board of fire commissioners in, in that year were using the average of what our, um, billing company said that we should be using because of what other people were charging in our area. And what they had noticed is that our revenues were not matching what our costs were for the ambulance service. So they asked me to come up with a formula to, to devise, how do we actually, what does our ambulance service cost our taxpayers? And since I'm a combined fire department, I had to figure out how do I separate the fire costs from the EMS costs? So I could say that if you take an ambulance ride, this is how much it's cost. So I came up with a formula and I don't have it with me, but it's basically, we take our operating budget, the total number of calls that we do in a year. How many of those calls are EMS related? That percentage, approximately seventy percent, is really what it costs us to run the ambulance service. The other thirty percent of those calls are fire-related calls. So thirty percent of our operating budget, you could say, is for the fire department. I, um, I have the document in my phone, I probably send it to you somehow. But anyways, that's the basis of it. So we take all of those transports that, so we say there's fifteen hundred calls and we transported a thou, a thousand people. That's seventy percent divided by a thousand is what it costs on the average per ambulance run.
So the twelve hundred dollar figure was based on your billing company giving you an average for, for your area? And the two thousand dollar figure was based on your calculating, um, an average per transportation event?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's, that's the down and dirty of it.
And, and in the beginning, in the beginning, I didn't hear, you said that you're from ambulance services?
Tilton Northfield Fire.
Say it again?
Tilton Northfield Fire District.
So you have a fire department?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I think what I, what Representative Spear wanted us to clarify to on that is the way that's described is not an appropriate methodology that's allowed under the GATS study. That you're not supposed to be combining those two and then, um, portioning off a percentage of it. What the GATS did is required much more detailed cost allocations for, um, you know, how much are you paying for EMS personnel? How much are you paying for ambulance? And it goes into a lot more of that granular detail. So in the cost analysis done by PCG, that is not at all the methodology being used. So that's why there is this huge difference. So they're not gonna line up because that's completely different methodology.
So, so sorry to ask a silly question, so what does GATS stand for and what does PCG stand for?
PCG is the Public Consulting Group. They are the consultant that was hired, um, from the legislation last year to do this work.
Okay, what is GATS?
The GATS, oh gosh, it's the Ground Ambulance Data Collection Survey. Data Collection Survey.
So that, that is owned by ambulance services or is it independent?
No.
It was a CMS initiative, so the federal government had, um, put together this initiative and they've been doing it for many years and they're still in the process of collecting all that data. What we try, what PCG tried to do in this study was leverage that data that has already been put together because we were only given, so the department and PCG were only given a very short amount of time to do this study. So we had to leverage those, um, data points that are existing. The GATS is a very robust data collection and has a lot of information. And it's onerous for the ambulance providers to get all that information, put it together. So what we were trying to do is leverage off of all that work that's already been done and use that as a basis.
So Gary is at the federal agency all across the country?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But for this study, we were only looking at New Hampshire providers.
Okay.
So in the spirit of compromise or working forward on this, if we're, the concerns that maybe where these numbers were came, that didn't truly reflect what was going on in the economy today, we can certainly put off the effective date to have another study done. But knowing full well that we want it to be done every two years to try to get the actual dollars. But my, my hope was to pass this and that the newer, newer dollars, the more expensive they have now will show up two years from now when we do this analysis again and then they'll get higher reimbursement rates.
If the difference was like a couple of hundred dollars, like from twelve hundred to twenty-two hundred, it's almost a double. So two agencies studying the same thing are reporting twelve hundred and twenty-two hundred, which is a big, major gap between two studies, which number is reliable?
Well, again.
I don't think that two thousand was not based off a study, that's based off of the equation that he was just explaining.
That was the formula that he, he, he created.
But you also have used some data to do it, so.
Well, he used data, but again, he was, there was some mixing of apples and oranges.
Oh, okay, so should we, should we rely on the number, first number? I'm sorry to.
Okay, so, all right, here's, here's the important thing for me. And this, this is really what this is all about. And that is, we charge the insurance department when, um, to, when it comes times for them to set insurance rates, we actually require them to, with any insurance company has got to come in and have some data to defend how they set that premium.
Yes.
Okay, how they set it. And so what we're now doing is taking that same concept and turning it around and saying is, and this is totally unusual. We don't do this with anything else in the insurance department. This is, we're breaking new ground here. That we're asking them to do that same kind of analysis, let's defend our numbers. Now, tell us, show us your numbers of how you come to it, how, and, and, and it's got to, you know, pass the sniff test for the department. And if they, if, you know, in terms of this formula, he has to defend that formula and how we, he's gotta give us evidence and proof that that formula that he was using was, was the right one. Okay, but that if we, if given what we're about to try to do here is totally unique, there's gonna be glitches. I, I grant that. But all we're trying to do is say is, instead of just picking a number out of the air and feel like, oh boy, we've done something, wouldn't it make more sense that we've created a rational system that has, is based on real numbers? And so that going forward, we'll never have to see this legislation again. That it, it will be resolved until Medicare and Medicaid finally, you know, pays a reverse. All I can say is for anybody who thinks they wanted to, you know, Medicare for everybody, take note what nightmare you are creating when you think you're gonna create Medicare for everybody. Representative Gibbs?
Thank you. Um, although personally, I would rather trust the ambulance companies or the, uh, fire department ambulance services estimation of their own costs rather than trusting a consulting company. Uh, nevertheless, um, wouldn't it be better to do something that we can do now rather than wait months or a year or two years for another study?
Well, that'll happen two years from now. I, I was saying, if, if you guys really want to delay this to figure out the right number, I just saying is, is that we've got a plan, we've got something in front of us. And my best advice is let's pass this.
So on your.
Okay, and, and implement this and let's see how it goes. And let's see if, now, I guarantee you, even if you pass this three twenty-five, they'll be, be back in two years telling you the number's too low. Okay, and so therefore, all I'm trying to do is rationalize a number, a reimbursement rate that in hopes, cross my fingers, they won't be back because the data will be good and the data will be right.
So Representative, uh, so, so Chairman Hunt, won't, won't your proposal assumes that, uh, uh, they will be in the network with ambulance so that they can work the numbers?
I, I would have to say is there, in terms of, uh, the probability of a, uh, insurance company, it, it, it's gonna be an ambulance company getting into the network is extremely problematic. Um, as, as Mark pointed out, it's, it's, you're, you're not calling your primary care physician and saying, please make a referral to my in-network physician, right, in-network fit. So that just doesn't happen and, and.
Well, the, 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 the only argument I, I heard against it is because the insurance company not paying them enough. Uh, that's why they don't, they don't do it in the network.
And again.
That's the only question, uh, problem I heard.
I, and, but I will have to say to you that I've never heard of a hospital or a primary care physician that ever said that they thought they were getting paid enough. Okay, no provider, no service. And as a matter of fact, when it comes to hospitals, you know, we the state write out big fat checks to all the hospitals to keep them afloat. So you could say, well, why don't we use that model and just be sending checks directly? So you could say, well, why don't we use that model and just be sending checks directly? You know, the state should be paying for all these ambulance companies, okay? But right now, our system is set up is that, that, those are paid by the cities and towns who actually hire and operate those ambulances.
Thank you. Um, isn't there a federal law called Section 1982, which says that everyone has the freedom to contract? And doesn't that mean that we cannot force anyone into a contract?
Correct, no one's talking about, who's talking about forcing anybody into a contract? He's not suggesting that, oh, he's not suggesting that. He was just saying would, would, what, what will.
How would you work it out otherwise?
How do, how do you get them to get to a point of a contract? And I'm just saying.
That's the operational logistics, not a requirement from.
Being here all these years, it's just not going to happen.
And I'm just saying, I agree with you, it's impossible at the moment.
Good, I'm glad we found something we can agree on.
Well, you also, you also mentioned on your bill saying that by establishing a uniform default rate schedule, how, I mean, that was the first, uh, question I asked in the beginning of our conversation, to have, why don't, why are different rates? And you, you are putting the same thing that by establishing uniform default rate schedule, how do you, how do you?
How do we set that rate? Is we, we hire this outside consultant who gets this data and that, then they will give us the recommended rate?
So that definitely is going to serve, serve the purpose that, like I said in the beginning, that, you know, I still wonder why the rates are so different by different providers. So once you have the uniform rate, then at least there is some common ground. I mean, it can differ a little bit depending on location, all those things, but it don't differ like 1,000 and 2,000, like we are seeing in two different studies.
Correct. That's why this is the right answer. Did you hear the explanation that was given?
Yeah, I heard the explanation, but again, the, that didn't make any sense that why the difference was so big.
You know, one of the problems we have is that a lot of stuff has happened over the last year and a half or two years with respect to this and there's a lot of history and a lot of information and maybe the information is there and it can be explained and maybe this, this isn't always the best place to do it, but we have a lot of the answers, or at least explanations for what you're asking. So if you want to sit down with us, with me or whoever, and, and at least look at the history, I, I sat in on every one of these meetings and saw how the data was put together.
Michelle has.
I'm sorry?
Michelle's going to want to speak to it.
Okay, if I may, um, when, when PCG was conducting the cost day, I just want to clarify a couple of things that the data they're looking at is data that the ambulance providers are providing. This is not independent data, this is their data that they have provided and put together about what their costs are, what their revenue streams are, all of that very detailed information. So it is based on that, but in analyzing the data, there is a wide variation in costs across the state. So part of what they're trying to do is come up with a rate that's going to work for the majority of providers. But, um, there's a lot of variation based on reality, based off of, you know, some towns or municipalities invest more into these things. So they have, um, you know, more resources maybe than are necessary, whereas some maybe don't have enough resources and all of that goes into the cost. So there is wide variation among the states. So that's part of the reason why we see these, um, huge differentiation.
So, so we all agree that, that definitely needs to be worked out to have some average, not like, uh, very like two different expenses.
Yes, and that's why if you look at the details of the cost study, it goes into a lot more of that detail. And the, the, um, consultant, PCG, um, they can be made available. Um, it's difficult, they're out of state, the, the lead person who can speak about everything that went into this study. Um, so we would have to arrange for her to come in person for some kind of joint meeting, but we could host, the insurance department can host some kind of Q and A session if people want to get more into the details about what was done in this study. But the study is very robust and there's a lot of information there in the report. So I would just encourage everyone to look at the report.
I also would like to mention that it didn't come up with one number for each of the different services. They came up with a number for urban, a number for rural and a number for super rural.
Right.
So they didn't try to average it all together in any way. They actually tried to break it up by depending on what kind of conditions they were in. The study itself is, is pretty self-explanatory and it's really quite good.
Uh, just one more thing to add to is the study does adjust for inflation. So even though the, the data is coming from various years, that data was adjusted to account for medical inflation.
Yeah, so as long as the ambulance services, they stick to those, like you said, even three subcategories, rural, urban, town, whatever, as long as their rates are in line with those readings, then you can say, as your, as your bill says, have a uniform rate schedule. Uniform doesn't mean that same rate, but at least pertaining to, or sticking to that standard being set by someone rather than having your own rate.
Right, it's a rational, it's a rational number rather than just picking a number out of the sky.
Yeah.
Just one more thing to add to, um, with respect to contracting, this rate would set a floor. There would be nothing prohibiting, um, the parties into entering into a contract at some other rate.
Say it again?
Uh, this would, this rate, if it were to pass, would set a floor. So it would, there would be no prohibition, the party still could contract and come into network and negotiate a different rate.
Which is what you've been suggesting.
Yeah, I mean, that, that again.
They might, they, they might look at that number and say, well, maybe it's signed to go into a contract and get a higher number.
Sure, as long as agreeable by both the parties, then both the parties are happy.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, so, um, it is quarter three. This bill, um, if I'm correct, this is the only, uh, 318 is the only one is an early bill.
So just one more comment.
Say that, say that again, Chairman Hunt?
That this bill, and I just want to make sure, you know, I want to, is 3, 316. Uh, no, no, 316 is not an early bill. Okay, which one, one of those was an early bill, wasn't it? Oh, 185. So 185 is the one bill we need to take action on. It is?
185 is the first one.
Let me, let me look at the official flow chart. Here's the official document.
We're talking 185, right?
See, this says, says it's not. Who, who has a computer? What does it say on the computer?
What is the question? Chairman, what is the question?
Representative, excuse me, Mr. Stew, as you can come up and speak.
It says 1, 185.
Right.
That was, that was my brother, sorry.
So I think 185 is the only one I got to get out today. This week, next week.
Yeah, March 6th.
Go ahead, what, what do you got to say?
Thank you, Chris Stew was, Hall's New Hampshire. I just, point of clarification, and you mentioned it, that your mom got a balanced bill. I'm going to assume your mom's on Medicare.
My mother at the time, yeah, yeah, she probably was on Medicare.
Okay. Medicare, Medicaid, commercial insurance. Medicaid, we can't balance bill anybody, take what the state determines is the rate. Medicare sets an allowable rate and then they only pay you 80% of that rate. You are federally required to balance bill that amount. So that's never going to go away, no matter what we do. And the commercial rate, we balance bill because we feel that the reimbursement is inadequate. And that's where I got my 20% from. So I'm, I'm not including the Medicare piece because we can't stop doing that, no matter what we all want to do in this room. That's still going to happen for everybody. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, isn't that interesting that they fixed it for, their air ambulances, but they left that one alone?
And just one more point, the company that I worked for for 31 years, which serviced Nashua and Manchester, did go out of business. It was Rockingham Ambulance. I spent most of my life there and now I'm with someone else. So it does happen.
So what happened to, to all the trucks and all that?
They sold them. They didn't even sell the company, they liquidated it. It was part of St. Joseph's Hospital and they couldn't, and they couldn't afford to run it anymore.
Well, that hospital's gone too.
So, uh, depends who you talk to.
Okay, so theoretically, uh, we, we can, we can spend a little more time, more and more thinking about this. We don't have to make an answer. The one bill that I would kind of hope, uh, we would take up, or we can wait till next week because I think I had it scheduled again next week, um, is the, is, is this three, is, uh, the 185.
So, so Chairman, one question, we, so far we have talked about, you know, Medicare, Medicaid and insured.
Right.
How, how do we address or do we even address the ones who are uninsured? And, and they, they take the ambulance and how, how that, that is dealt with? Or we were just?
Uh, well, you know, the, the good news is the uninsured is only about 5% and, uh, but yes, it is true that they, they would just get balanced bills and.
And they just pay.
I'm pretty sure they don't profit, they're, I don't know, do they go to the town welfare department? Does town welfare, I don't know, I don't know.
So you don't worry about that with 25%?
At this point, the problem, the meat of this bill, the meat of these issues is that we're looking at the fully insured market because the assumption is insurance companies don't, insurance have the deep pockets, all right? And the rate, and the people who, who, they have a system to be able to balance bill all the premium payers. Okay, then if we stick it to them, then they'll just, they'll just pass it on and we'll all pay higher premium, all of us who are fully insured will pay the higher premium, okay? Not me anymore because I'm, I'm, I'm over 65 now, okay? But for my employees, I, as a small employer, I would have to pay the difference. So the issue is, is that do this as a solution? Because other states have done it that way? Or should we find a good, long-term solution that is fair? Fairer maybe doesn't give enough money to some people's mind, but at least it's fairer than having this current system, which is, it's a, it's basically a user fee. And that's what balanced billing is, it's a user fee. You know, you use it, you're going to get, you're going to have to pay. And, and, but because it's municipal, people, you know, stub their nose and say, you know, turn it into a paper airplane and throw it in the trash can.
So it's more of a collection issue right now?
It is right now, if, if everybody paid that bill, so that if the balanced billing was all being paid, then there wouldn't be a problem, except that people come back and say to us, you've got rid of balanced billing for everything else. Why haven't you got rid of balanced billing for this one category? So Representative Gibbs?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to run something up the flagpole and see if anybody salutes. Um, uh, the suggestion is that the subcommittee recommend, um, ITL on HB 185 with the understanding that either 316 or 725 will be OTP.
Okay, that may be true. Uh, that would, that would solve that one bill, yeah.
Or just say that it, it can directly reimburse the ambulance provider?
Yes. It says that they pay the entire bill, which I don't think is going to apply.
Why can't we just, why can't we just ITL 185 without any other conditions attached to it?
We, yeah, we, we understand that we're going to come back and do something.
Oh, you said.
I, I am bound and determined to pass something. And yes, I am, uh, you know, as, as everybody knows, I'm, I, I, I have very strong feelings and, and yes, I think that the bill that I put in, even though it has my name on it, I, I did it, you know, in support of what the committee, the committee unanimously agreed to last year. So, so, but at this point, if, uh, you know, if, if we just, uh, you know, ITL 185, that would solve the, the, the problem for, you know, get, get past that.
Yeah, because if you are struggling on 325%, how can, this bill says pay full.
Yeah.
Nobody's going to pay full.
Okay. Okay, so you're ready to take action on? Everybody? 185? Okay, you got a voting sheet? Okay, after one, one discussion.
Much, much.
See the tape? You took down the tape. Okay. Representative Gibbs, are you, you're going to make the motion to inexpediate legislate?
I move that, um, HB 185 be ITL.
Okay.
So I just have a quick question on that though.
Yeah.
I mean, over.
But let me just take this motion first.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion second by Representative Gibbs for inexpediate legislate, uh, we're now open for discussion.
So the question was that in the analysis portion, it says, you know, for the full amount, that's why we are ITLing. But in the next page, it does say somewhere that in the absence of agreed upon rate, an insurance shall pay the amount billed by the ambulance provider for the service, subject to review by the insurance department. Oh, but it also puts in the event of a dispute.
Dispute, yes.
I guess, that's fine. Yeah. I, I thought they were going to review.
You'll put it in again next year, two years from now, I understand. Okay. All right, the, the motion is for inexpediate legislate on House Bill 185. Having our discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Those opposed? You unanimously? Okay, great, we're, we're done for today.